Item 10B, adopt a resolution accepting the Earl Glenview Park Master Plan and approving the preferred park design concept. Carrie.
Good evening. The tragic events that occurred on September 9th, 2010, when the PG&E gas pipeline explosion and fire occurred in the Crestmore neighborhood, which tragically took eight precious lives and destroyed 38 homes and damaged so many more, also destroyed the neighborhood park in the Crestmore neighborhood known then as the Earl Glenview Park. Through the planning efforts of the City Council, $1,750,000 has been allocated from the Crestmore Trust Fund for the reconstruction of a new neighborhood park. Over the past several months, the city and the design firm of MIG have worked with the neighborhood to develop the design vision for a new park. I am very excited to present for the City Council's consideration this evening the draft Earl Glenview Park Master Plan. If approved this evening, this park will set the design vision and preparation of the detailed construction drawings and documents which will be used for the park's construction. The location of the new park site is significantly larger in size than the original park. This offers the opportunity to provide more amenities, play areas, and open spaces. Only a very small portion of the original park footprint currently remains following the post-pipeline-explosion-infrastructure reconstruction. The park site now encompasses three residential parcels along Clermont Drive at Glenview Drive comprising approximately 14,000 square feet, known as the East Site, and one residential parcel at the intersection of Glenview Drive and Earl Avenue comprising approximately 700 square feet, known as the West Site, for a park space of approximately 1 half acre. To develop the master plan, the city and the design firm of MIG commenced a multi-step process of data collection, analysis, meeting facilitation, and design. During the inventory and analysis phase, the park site was evaluated to assess conditions such as utility locations, features of the parcels including site conditions and views, traffic and pedestrian circulation into and around the park site, access points into the park, locations of adjacent uses and neighbors, and existing patterns of activity in the area surrounding the park site. This needs assessment included consideration of park design best practices and existing City of San Bruno Park amenities and standards for other neighborhood parks throughout our community. Three neighborhood meetings were conducted by the city to solicit ideas and input from the Crestmore neighborhood. At the first meeting on February 2nd, residents were asked to articulate their vision for the park and share concerns regarding the neighborhood impacts, safety, and maintenance. We also asked for input on desired park amenities. The neighborhood deliberately did not include elements which would cause the park to become a destination park, such as parking, dog park amenities, and barbecues. Similar to other neighborhood parks, the proposal for this park is to only have safety lighting, no evening use lighting. These words on this, on the PowerPoint reflect some of the concepts that came up during the discussion. People wanted it to be welcoming and open in a place where the neighborhood could congregate. At the second meeting on March 21st, the neighborhood again came together to discuss a preferred park design layout by placing color-coded pieces of paper on a site map which represented park features. These qualities and considerations discussed at the first community meeting were considered during the exercise at the second meeting. At the third and final neighborhood meeting on May 12th, three concept plans were introduced. Meeting participants were asked to select a preferred concept and to express issues and questions regarding their preferred concept. Concept number two was the preferred concept, and it reflects both the East Site and the West Site and how those sites could generally be used. The West Site included play area for teens and an open lawn area, with the East Site having play equipment for younger children and open space for the neighborhood to congregate in the green lawn area, as well as a solitude area that would overlook the canyon. I'd like to turn your attention now to what was created by the input from the community, concept number two, and the further input that we received regarding that concept. If you look, we'll focus first on the East Site and going in clockwise order. What you will see is there is a front door or an access point into the park site where there is a heritage tree meant to mark the location and opening of the park. Then you move into a neighborhood square with seating, colored concrete, and picnic tables. Continuing to move through the park, you then see a play area color-coded with the blue, yellow, and green play mat with rubberized fall protection and play equipment for children two to five years of age. The park play equipment's yet to be determined; that will come later in the design process. You'll then see that there is an evergreen woodlands buffer between the active spaces of the park and the adjacent neighborhood to create both a physical and a visual buffer. Continuing to move around, you'll see a pathway that encompasses the entire core of the park, which also doubles as an adventure course with four-foot-wide walkway potentially for a bike path or for walking, again with colored concrete. One of the features that was very important to the neighborhood was a space where people could quietly sit and reflect and where also perhaps remembrance could be installed and determined at a later date. This is at the overlook, which is at the center of the park, and includes seating, colored concrete, and a view of the canyon and beyond. Continuing to move around the park, you see additional play equipment for children with fall protection, rubberized fall protection in blue, purple, and green, and then a neighborhood gateway so that the corner of Glenview and Clermont mark entrance to the neighborhood. And then finally, a green play space in the center of the park where kids could kick around a soccer ball, parents could play tag with kids, or whatever other activities people might enjoy. Moving to the East, or excuse me, the West Site, and I'm going to come back to this in just a moment. This is a much smaller parcel, though, as I mentioned earlier, the East Site is three parcels, the West Site is a single parcel. Again, you'll find the urban forest feature to buffer the park from adjacent neighbors, as well as an open lawn area, and potentially a sports court. The one feature that generated a significant conversation during the neighborhood meetings was the proposed inclusion of a sports court on the West Site. Neighbors expressed both a strong preference and support for and in opposition of this feature. Those in support were interested in incorporating into the park a play area to attract neighborhood teens and space for parents and children to play basketball. Those in opposition expressed concern about late-night disruptive behavior and noise which might be generated by a basketball game. To strike a middle ground, the preferred concept that you see this evening includes a sports court rather than a basketball court on the West Site. The space is not large enough for a basketball court but does have sufficient, excuse me, sufficient space for a basketball hoop standard. At this conceptual stage, it is estimated that park construction will be approximately $1.25 million. This number will become refined as the further design of the park commences. The further design will produce more refined cost estimates and fixtures and equipment. Staff is currently interviewing, accepting proposals, and will be interviewing landscape architectural design firms. We hope to bring back at your October 25th City Council meeting a contract award for a design firm that will then commence the design of the park. Further meetings regarding the details of the park design will be brought to the Parks and Recreation Commission for discussion with the commission and the neighborhood at the 60% and 90% design drawing phase prior to the project going back out to bid for construction. With regard to the maintenance of the park, we're estimating based on current finishes and layout and fixtures that two to three staff hours per day will be necessary to maintain the park, depending on the season and the final selection of plant materials. Presently, the annual maintenance cost, which includes labor supplies and equipment but not irrigation, water, or electricity, is approximately $70,000. The Parks and Recreation Commission has been actively involved during the neighborhood engagement and concept design phase. Representatives from the Park and Recreation Commission, Earl Glenview Park Subcommittee, Commissioners Laura Davis, Lori Greenberg, and Lucy Zamatia were in attendance at the neighborhood meetings and have provided periodic updates at the regularly scheduled meetings of the Park and Recreation Commission. At the Park and Recreation Commission's regular meeting just last week, the commission reviewed the draft master plan and solicited input from the Crestmore neighborhood. Residents expressed their overall favorable view of the process and preferred design concept. Several spoke about their concerns over the basketball hoop feature, both in support and opposition. During its deliberations, the commission indicated it was pleased with the process leading to the development of the draft master plan and liked the wide range of elements, complimentary park features, and care taken in the park's design to buffer park noise and activities from adjacent neighbors. Concern was expressed by several commission members regarding pedestrian safety when crossing Glenview Drive to move between the West and the East Park Sites and requested review by the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. Commissioners were divided on the question regarding the basketball hoop feature, some opposing its inclusion while others supporting the feature as a means to attract teens to the park. In an eight-to-one vote, the Park and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Commission recommends approval of the draft master plan to the City Council. The commissioner who voted in opposition of the draft master plan was not expressing opposition to the park or its elements. Rather, the commissioner expressed a preference for the sports court to be located on the East Side rather than West Side. The commission expressed its appreciation that the master plan took into consideration cost, safety, and noise, and asked that these concerns continue to be addressed throughout the design. Given the neighborhood and commission's discussion regarding whether or not a sports court should be included in the West Site portion of the park area, the City Council may want to consider providing direction on this topic at the time, at the time it considers award of a contract for design later in October. So next steps. Next steps for delivering the new Crestmore Earl Glenview Neighborhood Park include City Council's action this evening on the master plan, continued review and input from the Parks and Recreation Commission at the 60% and 90% construction drawing phase, as well as input from the neighborhood at those points, award of a construction contract in late spring of next year, and dedication in late 2017. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Carrie? Ken?
Carrie, are you satisfied with the outreach with the neighborhood and their participation? Seeing some of the photos, read through the staff report, and there were 14 people at one, one of the meetings. Because we've been through this for how many years and that with the neighborhood, it's just really concerned that, you know, that they've, that their voice has been heard and that, you know, and I realize every opportunity has been there to, for them to voice their opinion. Maybe they didn't show up, but do we have any, any input as to, you know, some of the, some emails or whatever as far as comments from, from neighbors that haven't fully participated?
So we did see participation over the three meetings decline from roughly 55 at the first meeting to 14 at the third. To try and bridge that, a letter went out to every household in the Crestmore neighborhood following the third meeting, inviting them to go to the city's website and look at the draft master plan and, well, first initially the concept plans. And then a second letter went out to the neighborhood inviting them to provide input on the draft master plan. I did receive a few emails, only a few emails, in follow-up to those two invitations, the letter, and then the opportunity to review on the city's website. We did have eight people provide oral communication at the Park and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week, and we did send out yesterday a next-door blast to everybody in the neighborhood inviting them to tonight's council meeting.
If I could just follow up on, the, the old site of the park is the lower area and everything, and I, and I realize, and I, and I didn't realize how vast that park, how large that park's going to be, and hopefully we'll get some real mature trees in there right away. But any idea, what, what's the plan for the, for the lower area? I'm looking at it right now on Google Maps, and seems to be possibly an area for the sports court issue or, or some other usage.
That was something that was discussed pretty extensively at the first two neighborhood meetings. I think in the end, the, the interest was in keeping all of the uses as closely bundled together as possible, and I think there was also concern about cost to connect that lower parcel to the upper parcel and a stairway or some other feature that would need to be constructed. So at this point, the concept plan does not contemplate utilization of that space.
Anything else for Scott?
I don't know if anybody from the audience is here to comment, or, I got some, I know there's one. I, I knew or a couple, but more, the more the merrier.
Just tell us your name and your street.
Brendan O'Connor, 1646 Clermont Drive. I am one house down from the proposed site. So I'm a father.
Raise the mic up, there you go.
I'm a father of two young children. A lot of the families that had moved into the newly reconstructed homes have small kids like I do. Right now, there's one patch of grass for the kids to play on, on that whole street, and it's my front yard, and there's a tiny little patch of grass. The sidewalks are not in good repair, the kids can't ride their bikes. The only option is playing inside or playing in the streets. So having this park and having features for kids of all ages, and I love the idea of somewhere where I can kick a soccer ball with my daughter. I love the idea of being able to shoot hoops with my son, and it, I think it'll bring the community together. It's the central part of that neighborhood. It's where all the streets come together. There isn't a good, safe place for the kids to play. And I think as the kids grow up, playing basketball and hanging out at a local park where all the parents can see, I think that's a good thing. Climbing down into the canyon or hanging out all day at the mall is what I would have done when I was a teenager if I had nothing to do. So I think building things for kids of all ages and that where families can come together, I think it's important for the community, it's important for the neighborhood, and very supportive of the plan, and I've been to all the meetings, I've been active in the community, I've been active talking to my neighbors, and I think that we did a good job with the community outreach, and I've definitely been engaged in the process. So thank you to Carrie for all the work as well. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Carolyn Gray, 1101 Fairmont Drive. I'm directly across the street from the park, and I know these gentlemen's children, and they're the sweetest little kids. My concern is for those children. There doesn't, they have plantings, but they, is no fencing, and that is the most dangerous corners there because the commute traffic cuts off. They come Skyline Boulevard, they come down Clermont, and then they cut up Glenview so as to avoid having to go further on Skyline Boulevard. And the number of people that stop at the stop signs is very, very tiny. I can picture these kids playing with the balls, having them go out into the street, and even though mom and dad are sitting there watching them, I'm a mother of two sons, now grown, a little grandson, but the point is that these children will go chasing, and you can't catch them fast enough when they want to go in the street. I think some kind of real fencing is very, very important at those sites. The other, both at the Earl and Glenview one, they're talking about having like a basketball hoop, but I don't see anything in the way of fencing there, and balls go in places where you don't expect them to be. Not only that, but just children running around. So please take that into consideration, the safety of the children. My other thing is, I have attended all of the meetings, including the commissioners' meeting the other night, and I have to be really honest, I'm not sure of one part of the plan. Originally, there had been talk about having a dog park, and it was going to be down kind of in the Glenview Canyon area. And then they said, well, we won't call it a park, we'll just call it a dog area. Okay? That seems to be kind of nixed, and then the next thing was that dogs would be allowed to be in the children's play area. No other park in the city allows the, the dogs in there, and they said, well, they would be on leash. Well, I, I don't know. I just think that I know some children that are very frightened of dogs, and I think that the policy should be as it is in all the parks in the city, that dogs are not allowed whether they're on a leash or not. So my concerns are, one, the safety of the children because those are extremely bad because I'm almost gotten hit several times down at the bottom of Glenview and Earl trying to cross the street there because it's a steep street, and people let the, the gaffs go so that they can make it down and back up without having to press it again. And people coming down Earl don't stop at that stop sign either any more than they do at the one at Clermont and Glenview. So children's safety and the concern of the dogs are my issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Eric, 1127 Fairmont Drive. So the park would be right down the street from my house, and I just want to voice my support for the park, my absolute support. I have two young children, and having the park there is one of the reasons that we bought into the neighborhood. The Crestmore School that my, that we intended to send our kids to was closed down after the fire. This is kind of like our consolation. We've been dreaming about this park. I mean, and everybody that I know in the community, which we all, you know, we, we have a community there with a lot of young parents, a lot of young kids, a lot of people are moving in right now, and this park is like this, this thing that we just cannot wait till we have this place where we can congregate, have a, a community center where, you know, we can go down to the park and talk to adults, have the children play with each other, get to know their neighbors in, in, in the neighborhood. So just really looking forward, forward to all that, and I certainly echo the concerns of Carolyn. I think about that, too. I do. You know, I, I've thought about that, too. A ball runs, goes in the street, you know, that scares, that's the fear of, of any parent. So, you know, safety has to be of utmost concern for anything, but it shouldn't deter from the development of this, you know, community center, basically.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay? Any other council member comments?
Through the chair.
Marty?
I have a four-year-old, so I share your concerns, and, and having a park nearby is, is an amazing way to get that energy burnt off so that he can go to sleep earlier, if he goes to sleep, you know. So fencing, I'm sure that those recommendations will be highly considered. Concern about the dogs as well, as you expressed, that dogs, you know, there's rules that you can't, you shouldn't have dogs off-leash, but, you know, it takes one person to really not pay attention to their dog, and, and I'll get a dog one of these days, maybe when my son's a little older, but little kids and, and big dogs don't mix, you know, so hopefully there'll be some more consideration about that, talking about that. I had a few questions about the budget because the fiscal impact, it says there's none. None to...who? It's not really, well, it's maybe not, it's not fully accurate because the trust isn't going to pay every year. It's going to be an ongoing cost that $70,000 a year plus is going to have to come from the city. So is it the first, is the first year covered? Is it not covered at all? Yeah, but that, I was at that park, that park was nothing. There was a sewer manhole in, in the middle of that park, so that park probably had nobody going by there like once a week, but anyhow, I'm sorry, go ahead and answer.
Through the mayor, if I may, it's a discreet action. Your, your question is, is a good one. This evening's action has no fiscal impact, and that's what the fiscal impact section is, is intended to focus on. Just the discreet action this evening of approving the draft master plan in and of itself does not have a financial cost associated with it.
That's a good answer.
However...
I'm waiting for, the however is huge because we have to...
On October 25th...
Yes.
...when we plan to come before the council again for an award of contract for a landscape design firm, there'll be a cost associated with that for retaining the design firm, and that will be included in the staff report. And then when the council awards the contract, there'll certainly be a cost associated with that. Implicit in doing that, as we continue to move through the steps of approving the park and ultimately delivering it, is a cost associated with the maintenance. Presently, I don't believe that there is anything allocated for the maintenance of the park, and as the council may recall, in the budget discussions earlier in the year, I mentioned with the delivery of the Crest, of the Earl Glenview Park, the Florida Avenue Park, and the San Bruno Avenue median segment, in the 1718 budget, we will be requesting two additional parks maintenance positions, and part of that is represented in that $70,000.
Good answers. What's the budget for, for the projects and, and under the design and projected on construction, and is there going to be enough money to do it?
So the money allocated out of the Crestmore fund right now is $1,750,000. The work that was done by MIG that the council approved back in 2014 was slightly less than $40,000 to facilitate the community engagement and do the concept plans, so you're into at 40 right now. I estimate that the design contract will be in the $100,000 range. I don't want to, in case there's anybody watching, I don't want to give you a really precise number. So roughly $100,000, and the report before you this evening that has a very large 30% contingency built into it because design is so sort of conceptual at this stage, has the park at $1,250,000. If you add all of those, you're at about $1,400,000 in project-related costs, and you have a budget of $1,750,000. So we should, we should be within budget.
Thank you. Okay. Rico, you had a question, comment?
I just, I just wanted to understand that these are the master plans, they're very preliminary. Obviously, you'll get these areas generally in the place that they've been laid out, but the concerns about safety, whether it's a berm, whether it's a low fence, whether it's a wall, low wall or something, those are all details that we'll get addressed. Because that was one thing that I, I noticed is that you got a sidewalk and then you have a play area right there, I mean, especially over on the, on the West Side with the, you know, at the sports court. It just seems right there on, you know, playing whatever, and you got the pictures of how it might, you know, how, how the people might be using it and everything, and that's right next to the sidewalk. And then you have picnic tables, you know, over by the heritage tree over on, on Clermont that seems really close to the street, and I don't see any park in our city that has those activities that close to the, to the sidewalks. There's, you know, maybe Commodore where you have a berm and some grass area buffer, you know, and then you have the play area, then you have the playground area and the, and the picnic area. So with that said, just looking at it on Google Earth, I just, again, it's just amazing how large this area is, and so I'm sure the designers will be able to do that well. But just to reassure everyone, this is very preliminary, and a lot of those concerns will, will get implemented, you know, as, as the design gets refined.
Through the chair. So just echo on the fencing that was already raised by all of us, so we're all on the same page on that. It is a, a large change from what was. So when I was in Parks and Recreation staff many, many moons ago, that was, I think, two pieces of equipment may have been there, if there was room for it, tucked away down below on the hillside where you were going, like, I don't know if I let my kid go there because there wasn't really any protection to the street or as well down, down the hill too much. However, the cost that is associated, as you said, which has always been something I've raised and been concerned with, is we can have dreams, but then, you know, we do have to keep it up. We do have to invest. We do have to invest, because we don't want something new, and then all of a sudden we're not putting in as, as, I'm going to be in a broken record, but about the medians and about this and about that. Yes, I understand you're asking for more staff. You're estimating $70,000 for a park without water, without electrical, without irrigation. That would be in addition to that. One thing you talked about was having potentially more neighborhood meetings. So my question on that one is going to be, is there some vision to have the consultants come back? Which is at a cost, which I can give you my immediate answer, which would be, I'd rather have that money go back into the park and not into a consultant. I think the neighborhoods met, and they can talk amongst themselves. I haven't known this neighborhood to be shy or not to share their, their wishes. But I would like to, I'd like to, I think that they've done their job, and I think it now is on the ownership of the neighborhood and staff to work together with the commission to get it accomplished. But the fencing is a major concern and, and the funding. I'm starting to hear you with the numbers, which was good, was a good answer, as she, as the vice mayor said. But it's starting to add up, and I'm getting concerned that we don't find ourselves halfway trying to figure out, okay, how are we gauging the material versus the equipment versus the aesthetics versus, you know, I want it done, and I want it done correctly, quickly, and efficiently. But I also want us to be mindful of the costs. And also what we're putting into this park, if it can minimize the cost of the overall maintenance by the vegetation and how it's structured. Many times, I've always said, when I worked in Parks and Rec, when you're going to do median strips, when you're going to create parks, let's go to the maintenance workers. Those folks who are within the field do the work, will tell you how to save time and how to make it the best possible park with the little maintenance and bending over and trying to save time and efforts. So I hope, again, we get the parks maintenance workers who are actually in the trenches doing the job and getting them engaged, because they'll be doing the work, and they can probably better direct us up here on what needs to be done. And maybe we can cut that number down, because that is a lot of staff time and dedication. You're almost talking about one employee for a park in the whole town.
Irene, have you got?
Thank you. First of all, I'm very excited for you all. It's been a long time coming, I know, but I think the process you had to go through really partly helped build your community as well. So I think that's exciting part, too. I want to thank staff. I know how very hard they worked. It's an amazing amount of effort to get to where we are. I know it seems like a long, long time. We're working on the Florida Park as well, and it's like, oh, can't we just build it tomorrow? No, you can't. So I understand that part. I, I don't want us to say, put a fence. I'm concerned with safety as well, but I know that the park design people take into account fences and burrs and all sorts of ways to produce the safety part of it. So I would just leave it at that. Make sure the kids' safety's in the front, and I'm sure they'll come up with some great concepts. I know we talked...
Safety component.
Yeah, safety component. I know we talked to some, when we were doing Florida, about how that all works and the different vegetation, and it's, that part's exciting, too. And I, I want to address you gentlemen, we have an adopt-a-park program that I'm sure Ms. Burns will be delighted in signing you up for it, and that would help with maintenance as well. So thank you very much for coming, too.
Great. So you will get your park?
[laughing]
All right. That's, that's not a worry, and it will be done properly. Irene, you have one more thing?
I'm just sorry. Carolyn, I know you asked about the dogs. Nobody up here, anyway, and I don't believe the Park and Rec commissions have ever said anything about allowing dogs at any park or to change any of the current ordinances. So that's probably one of those rumors that, you know, float through the internet.
And Irene, and thank you for bringing that up. I had that on my note.
Yeah.
Irene and I on the Florida Park are dealing with that same question that has come up. And there is an ordinance in the city of San Bruno that affects all parks equally and across the board, and dogs are not supposed to be in the park. That is the ordinance as it is written. So that's...
So you will get your park?
[laughing]
Unless something changes, which anything can change.
It will be a safe park. Carolyn makes some good points about the, the cars coming up and down there. They use it like a ski jump, for crying out loud. And so I think the, it was a pre-construction meeting today with Harry and the, and the people that are going to construct all the new sidewalks and streets. And I think towards the end of that, we should get it to the transportation or the Traffic and Park Safety Committee to address some of the issues that will, will come up regarding this. So I think you could do some traffic calming measures, although I think some people in the very beginning didn't want some things there, but you're going to have to do it. When you're mixing people and cars, it's a dangerous situation. So as far as the dogs, no dogs in the park. It's, it's a park. Okay? So I wouldn't worry about that. And I also want to thank the residents. It's, it's been a difficult six years, but something good has to come out of this, and you're starting to see some of that now. This is exciting stuff, and it's good stuff. It's, it's, it's good for this entire city. And to staff for all the time and effort you put into this and reaching out to the community and really getting a, a good feel for what people want. So we look forward to this. Would someone like to adopt the resolution?
I would love to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwing.
Aye.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, good for you.
I'll break the ground tomorrow.
It's okay.
Now we win.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.